Good evening. Going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for Tuesday, February the 14th. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everybody. We have got an exciting agenda with several things on it, so we're going to go ahead and jump into it with council comments. I believe that Mr. Holmes is joining us on the phone tonight. Is Mr. Holmes, are you there?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to, I did have just a quick thing I wanted to highlight tonight. We have a student, or not a student, excuse me, a teacher at our school system, Courtney Prophet, who won a statewide recognition that I wanted to highlight. She is our English as a Second Language instructor in our school system. She goes to most of our schools, if not all of them, on a weekly basis, teaching our kids. But she was recently at the Virginia English Language Supervisors Association yearly meeting, and she was awarded both the Distinguished Service Award and the Excellence in Teaching Award. So statewide, she won both of those. That's pretty phenomenal. She does a great job. So hopefully, the school board will recognize her, too. If they don't, they should. But I wanted to make sure that we recognize her tonight. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Jake, and congratulations, as he said, to Ms. Prophet for her win in that competition. Are there any other council comments?
I'll say something briefly. I know that some people have been, have expressed to me their disappointment concerning relocation of the public comments at the end of the meeting. Let me say that we had some extensive discussion on that matter. We want to do anything we can to avoid restricting the feedback from the public, and we want to hear everything that you have to say. We also need to make sure that we can get everything done in the meeting, and we have had some rather lengthy public comment sessions in some recent meetings. We're going to see how it goes today, having the public comments at the end of the meeting. That was just a decision that was made because we want to make sure that we do not restrict anything that you have to say while, at the same time, trying to get business done. I do appreciate everything that everyone has to say. I want to encourage you to stay involved, get involved in any way that you can, and I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to echo Mr. Holmes' comment about Ms. Prophet and the award that she won, and also recently saw, shared online, our 12th grader, Bearcat Brody Jones, I believe, officially signed to play football next year at Virginia Tech. So he's now a Hokie, so we wish him well, and congratulations to him and his whole family, and really to all of our student athletes. Several of them will be playing at the next level in various sports next year.
City manager's comments. All right. Next item is adoption of the agenda. Looking for a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Farnham, second by the Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
First item on the regular agenda is presentation from Emory and Henry College staff report.
Counsel, tonight, we have Emory and Henry College here to give a short presentation about the college and what it does here in southwest Virginia. So I'll turn it over to Allison Mays, and then she'll turn it over to the President.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Allison Mays. I'm Director of Government Relations at Emory and Henry College, here along with President John Wells. We just wanted to take time to update you on what Emory and Henry is doing in the region, particularly in Bristol. We can alleviate your concerns. We're not here to ask for anything. We're just trying to have a more proactive presence in the region and keeping our elected officials updated with our projects on campus. First, I'll just update you on some fast facts about the college. We were founded in 1836, and we're the oldest institution of higher education in southwest Virginia. Our 335-acre campus is spread throughout Washington County and Smith County. We also have the Equestrian Center and Exit 10 in Bristol. And our main campus is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and the Virginia Historic Landmarks Register. We have a total enrollment of approximately 1,400 students. Fifty-four of these students are from the Bristol area, and this fall, we're currently talking to 476 prospective students from the Bristol area. We're consistently ranked among the nation's best private liberal arts institutions, and here you can see, we truly are a college of distinction. We're consistently ranked as a top college in a range of noteworthy areas. U.S. News and World Report, Colleges of Distinction, Virginia Living. You know, we see every year, we have top ratings along the school and along with our faculty as well. The Van Vlietgen Center for Career and Professional Development. There's a fine lady who works there named Amanda Pollard, who does a great job working with our students. As you can see, our career fields include education, healthcare, business services. Our students are finding great career opportunities and graduate school opportunities as well. And once we survey our classes about six months after graduation, we find that 94% of our graduates are either employed or in graduate school. You can see, we also have internships and full-time positions once our students graduate, and you can recognize some of those from Bristol, including Ballard Health, Bristol Motor Speedway, K-That, First Bank and Trust, General Shell, and also Hard Rock Casino. We recently conducted an economic impact study earlier, well, actually, last April. It shows that Emory and Henry College plays an important role in the regional economy. We employ 362 full-time and part-time faculty and staff members each year, and 91 of those employees are from the Bristol area. We spend more than $46 million annually on college operations, which includes paying our employees, purchasing goods and services, and investing in capital projects. President Wells will go over some of those with you here in just a bit. And enrolled students and visitors from outside the region contribute an estimated $18 million in local expenditures on off-campus housing, lodging, restaurants, retail, entertainment, and transportation. So overall, employment through college operations, 584 jobs through student and visitor spending is an additional 329 jobs. Labor income through college operations and student and visitor spending is around a little under $30 million, and value added, which is our contribution to local GDP, is right at $50 million. So our total overall economic impact is right at $100 million through college operations, student and visitor spending, through direct, indirect, and induced effects of the college. We are the seventh-largest employer in Washington County, and I wanted to share some instances of where our students volunteer in Bristol, Partners for Stronger Communities, Southwest Virginia Museums, Birthplace of Country Music, Rivers Way, the Green Team with Bristol Rhythm and Roots, communities and schools, Bristol Regional Housing Authority, Bristol's Promise, YWCA, Apex Center, Boys and Girls Club, the Children's Advocacy Center, and Wallace Middle School. We have a lot of student teachers who go there. And then our partner organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, we're active with the Chamber of Commerce, Boys and Girls Club, Bristol Motor Speedway. We have two members of our faculty and staff who serve on the Board of Directors for Birthplace of Country Music Museum. We sponsor a stage every year at Rhythm and Roots. We do some advertising with Bristol Herald Courier. We're in talks with Hard Rock Casino about doing a hospitality program through the School of Business. Of course, we have student teachers in your schools in Bristol. YWCA, we have a board member there. We participate in the Bristol Christmas Parade, volunteer at Hilling Hands Health Center, and participate with Speedway and Lights. Come on, Clicker. Do I need to be pointing it a certain way? Is he checking on it? Thank you. Oh, it skipped one. Is it possible? It skipped a slide. Is it possible to go back one? Well, it was just showing pictures of our involvement in the community with the Christmas Parade and students volunteering, alumni active in the community, and our faculty and staff volunteering. So to finish up with my part, I hope you'll come visit us sometime on campus. We have a lot going on, a new School of Business that has an MBA program, a new multi-sport athletic complex, and Equestrian Center that Dr. Wells will be talking about, and a new apartment complex. So thank you for your time. I do appreciate it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or if not, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wells.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you so much for allowing us to be here this evening and giving you a little bit of an update about what's going on at Emory and Henry. We recognize that the college really needs to be a great institutional citizen of southwest Virginia, and that is our goal. A couple of the things that I do want to point out very quickly before we go on to these updates. Emory and Henry recognizes that, as an institutional citizen of this region, we are part of, as you've just heard from Allison's presentation, we are part of the economic development of the area. So we have shifted some of our emphasis at Emory and Henry, while it remains a great institution with classic studies and all of the rest. We also recognize that a college education ought to really prepare people for the world of work. And so at Emory and Henry, we are focusing very much on the idea of helping our students to develop a strong work ethic and develop a sense that really doing an honest day's labor is an honorable thing and really a key part of the well-lived life. So that is, that's part of what we have been doing. There's several things that we do have that are really, that we're very proud of. I'll begin with the growth in the student population. Two years ago, we welcomed our largest incoming class. Last year, we welcomed our largest number of students living on campus. We are now ahead of both of those numbers going into this third year. So we're very pleased. If you look at the top academic programs, biology, business administration, equine studies, exercise science, nursing, psychology, engineering, and education, one of the things that you would see here that you might not have seen 20 years ago, certainly at Emory and Henry, is the fact that many of our majors connect directly to the world of work, and I think that's very important. We're coming from all kinds of different places in the country, and we're bringing people to southwest Virginia, and many of whom have developed a love for the place. It's hard not to fall for this area. So we're also bringing international students, and we've certainly been able to add to some of the diversity as well. I want to call your attention very quickly to the new Equestrian Center. We are working on the campaign right now to raise funds for the new Equestrian Center at Exit 26. We will continue to use the Equestrian Center that we have now at Exit 10. We intend to continue to be part of the Bristol community, and we have other ideas that, I'll come back at a later time and let you know some of the things that we're thinking about here in Bristol, because it's important for this entire corridor to really share in the economic growth and the success at Emory and Henry. And we want to be part of the great success of Bristol. This great town is really making strides, and we know we can be good partners together. But at the Equestrian Center at Exit 26, as you head up out of Abingdon and on to Emory, this would be on your right-hand side as you're pointed toward Glade Spring. And so the new Equestrian Center, we have a world-class equestrian program. They're national champions. So we want to have a facility that really honors their record as well. So you can see that it will be a significant presence there, and we're very pleased about it. We're already well on our way to raising the funds that we will need. We're going to make certain that it is an aesthetically pleasing center as well. We are already able to bring in all kinds of students from around the country, a lot of our growth from many of the states. Our students that are coming to southwest Virginia, this is really becoming a place known for its equine and presence of really championship horses. We have really also been the beneficiaries of horses that have been donated to Emory and Henry that are post-Olympic horses. They are magnificent animals and just really beautiful to look at, and really, it's impressive to see our students compete with them. On the other side of the interstate, they're on the left-hand side, as you would go closer to campus. For those of you that are familiar with Exit 26, it's where the dairy barns are now. If you look out on that left, that will be our new multi-sport complex. Our goal is to make certain that, as we've made our move to Division II athletics, we're part of the South Atlantic Conference now. This has been a great success for Emory and Henry. We compete with a lot of area institutions like UVA Wise, down to Tuscaloosa, Carson Newman, Mars Hill, schools that are in our area. So we want to have first-class athletic facilities for them, and we have already been in lengthy discussions with the Virginia High School League about how we can sponsor as many high school championships for our track, for our new track facilities. That's going to bring a lot of visitors to our area, and so connecting them to Bristol is certainly something that we want to do, because if people come here for their kids competing in high school athletics, and then they have the opportunity to have great leisure time here in Bristol, again, that's good for everybody, and all of the great opportunities for recreation here in Bristol will help to draw people into our area. We're building a new housing complex. If you all are like me, you can think back to being in college in, well, some time back. And, you know, you remember residence halls, we called them dorms back then, and they were made out of cinder block, and you had one phone on the hallway. At Emory and Henry, we recognize that we have to keep up with where our students are asking and what they're asking for. So we have apartment-style housing that's being constructed there on Hillman Highway, just down from the college. Again, we're placing a heavy emphasis on aesthetics. We want to make sure that it looks good and that it contributes to the community. This is a new 96-bed facility, and we're very pleased with where that is, and you can see the campus and then right down Hillman Highway. We will have additional plots there, where we will be able to expand as well. Next month, we are kicking off our new School of Business. We took one of the iconic buildings on campus, which was the Carragher Dorm. It was built in 1902, a beautiful Carnegie-area Carnegie design, and turning that into our School of Business. Again, one of the things that Emory and Henry is attempting to do is find ways to incentivize students to stay here in the area. We know that what is good for southwest Virginia's economy is good for Emory and Henry and vice versa, and so we are really putting time and resources into our business program. As I mentioned earlier, it has now become our number-one major business administration. Regardless of what field of life and work you go into, having a background in business is certainly a very strong and good thing to have. So we're working hard to increase our programming there. We were able to land the services of a very first-class dean. We have multiple programs that are being launched out of our School of Business. We just completed a Powell Student Success Center and renovation there. Our goal is to make certain that when our students come to Emory and Henry, we don't want students to come and stay a year or two and then leave with debt. We want them to come and stay and get their degree, and so we're working very hard to make certain that our students have everything that they need to be successful. There, we had one of our very favorite members of the staff at Emory and Henry, Gus the Therapy Dog. What a wonderful addition he was. But this is the new space that we have designed, lots of natural light, and students have great opportunity to have that kind of academic coaching to help them get through. You know, Emory and Henry is 186 years old. It's been around a long time, and we want to make sure that it continues to stay around. But again, as we all put our shoulders together to move this, the great goals of economic development, Emory and Henry intends to be a partner with the entirety of southwest Virginia, but Bristol in particular. So thank you very much for your time. Are there any questions that I could answer for you on Emory and Henry's growth? From time to time, we'll come back to keep you updated, because it's important for everyone in our region to know what we're doing, so.
Well, I don't have any questions myself, but I just wanted to say thank you for coming tonight, and you touched on several things that were already in my mind that I've heard about the growth, especially with the new sports complex, new student housing. I think that's great. So we appreciate you coming, and, you know, I think one thing we need to do here in the city of Bristol with our young people, and this is something with the superintendent and the school board, is to let our young people know, you know, we have some great educational opportunities right here locally with Emory and other areas close by. You don't have to go 1,000 miles or 500 miles away to find a good school after high school here. We've got them already here in our backyard, so we appreciate everything you all do for our community.
Well, thanks so much. Really appreciate that.
And I just wanted to echo those comments and say thank you for the presentation tonight. I think Emory is one of the most beautiful campuses around, and I always love if I have to go to a meeting up there or go, sometimes I go to a football game. But thank you for all that you're doing in order to try to keep our best and our brightest here. That is one of the things that I've been focused on, too, is trying to keep them here and where they don't want to move away and go to other colleges, or then go to other colleges, but also get them back here. So I like that you have the master's program now, and I know that several people that I know have been going through that, so I was excited to see that. The other thing that you said about having the, talking to the VHSL league, I'm excited to hear that that could be a possibility, because having children that has played in those state tournaments or regional tournaments, when you get to that level, we always had to travel. We'd been to Salem, or we'd have to go to Hampton or somewhere way off, so if that's a possibility, I'd love to see that.
Absolutely. That's exactly right. Yeah, parents these days, really, when they enroll their kids in organized sports, it's a commitment, and if they can come to an area like this, it has so much, so many great restaurants and so many good things to do, that's all for the good for all of us.
Some of these new things will be higher profile. The new sports centers are going to look fabulous from the interstate. One thing, though, that's more exciting to me is the new business, School of Business. Do you have, or are you contemplating having a fully online program or just a hybrid program?
Yeah, we're exploring all options, because, you know, you're going to have to have multiple delivery methods to really reach people, and one of the things that we want to be able to do is at Emory and Henry is really help people to retool when they're changing jobs, changing professions. If they can do that right here and we can make that easy for them, we'll have a better chance at holding them here in the region. So we're looking at multiple ways of delivery.
The online programs tend to be a really good opportunity for people who are looking to improve their skill set while they're currently on their current jobs.
Right.
Whether or not they're even looking to relocate elsewhere, they may just be wanting to improve their own skill set.
Yep, you're so right.
Would you be able to share any of your concentrations in the School of Business?
Yeah, we, some of the things that we're looking at are hospitality, for example. We've landed some really kind philanthropy, and that is something that we've actually been thinking about. What would that look like if we did more of that here in Bristol? And I can talk to you more about that as we continue to develop it, but that's one of the keys. We have a long tradition of being an institution that's strong in accounting, and having those skills is really important, marketing as well. So multiple approaches, but I do think that as we continue to develop and make our tourist economy even richer here, having a strong hospitality program, I think, can really help. Thank you.
If I could just add one more comment to that. I'm really excited to hear that, because ever since VI closed, they had a hospitality program, and so we've liked that. And my day job is, I work for Virginia Tourism, the State Tourism Office, so I'd love to have more conversation with you about that if you need any input.
Absolutely. I would really, really welcome that. That would be great.
Dr. Wells, thank you for your presentation. You know, I'll say, I'll echo some of these comments. You know, it's important for us to find a way to have our young people who live here be educated and find a way to stay here, and it's equally important that, you know, you were showing that map of where people are coming from. You know, show them the benefit and the value of southwest Virginia, northeast Tennessee, of, you know, the greater mountain empire, and bring them here and let them stay here. And especially, you know, when you're coming out of college and you've built up some college debt, and you have a lower cost of living here than other places.
Exactly right.
It's a good selling point, natural beauty and all these other things, so.
That's right.
I do have one question for you. You kind of went through it a little bit fast. On the underserved populations that you're trying to increase the student share from, are those racial underserved populations or economic underserved populations?
They're both, but first-generation college students is really where we're placing a lot of our emphasis. And, you know, one of the things that, this is something that people don't really realize, private higher education in the Commonwealth of Virginia is really doing more in terms of a ratio of educating first-generation college students. Emory and Henry wants to be part of that as well, and so about 40% of our students are Pell-eligible, and so we're bringing students here who have the desire to learn, and they have the inclination to do that, and providing them this heavy student success coaching, giving them a sense of what a college education can do by benefit of our Van Vlietgen Career Services Center, of which, as has been mentioned, Amanda Pollard is such a key figure in that. This is all for the good in helping students to have upward mobility. What we really want, we want our students to be able to graduate from Emory and Henry and have an advantage when they're going into the market for the world of work. And so if you can take a first-generation college student, teach them the value of work, teach them the value of being in conversation with all kinds of different people, all with our Methodist heritage of being a place that is faith-based, and you can wrap all of those things together, you've really done something good for a student when you can get them to credential and get them graduated.
Are there any other questions? Well, Dr. Wells, thank you again.
Well, thank you so much. Come see us. We'd love to see you on campus, and we certainly are very pleased to be here this evening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item two is approval of Virginia Brownfield's Assistance Fund Grant Project for 172 Piedmont Avenue. I believe Mr. Chapman is providing the staff report.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time. Tonight, I'm asking you for approval to submit a grant application for a business to locate down on 172 Piedmont. Put together a small presentation to kind of give you a little bit about it. So, the, I'll refer to it as the VPAC grant. It's, Virginia Brownfield Restoration Economic Development Assistance Fund was established to provide either grants or loans to local governments to promote the restoration and redevelopment of Brownfield sites and to address environmental problems or obstacles to reuse the sites. This, the work that's going to be done here, the owner's already got proposal from Taffin Frye. And so, it's going to be doing some abatement. For the abatement disposal of the floor, this is the budget for it. I'm not asking for any money from the city. The actual $40,000 will be coming from the owner, and it's going to be used as a settlement statement to match the grant. It does require a one-for-one match, but he's already put $40,000 into it, and we're only asking for a little over $20,000 to get it accomplished. It's going to take, the abatement will take seven days. The completion of the whole project should be 90 days. He's in discussions with a new business owner to bring a swim business to the location. It should actually brighten up Piedmont quite a bit. This location's, it's looked pretty rough for a while. He joined our Made in Bristol program last year, and then from then on, he's been wanting to be a part of downtown. So, he purchased the property a little less than a year ago, just to be part of downtown. He will work with Taffin Frye, and the local match will be provided by the business owner. Again, today, I'm just asking for approval so the city manager can sign off on the grant application.
Thank you. Looking for a motion and a second to proceed on this.
So move.
Second.
I'll make that motion by caption only.
Motion from Mr. Pollard, second from Mr. Farnham. Counsel discussion.
I just wanted to say I appreciate you coming in and giving us the information. The stretch of Piedmont is a stretch that is ripe for growth. Obviously, it's right in between Blackbird Bakery, the Blended Peddler, and then across the street is the new restaurant that was announced recently, Union 41. So, this is a great stretch where there's some development that can take place, and it'll really brighten up, continue to brighten up the block.
I am excited to see a new tenant in one of those locations that's been vacant for a while. It'll be a great addition to our city.
I agree, and, you know, I appreciate all the work that you do. I know that anytime I catch up with you, you've got 15 different irons in the fire, and, you know, that's what we need for economic development. So, you know, I appreciate this. Is this person, when are they going to announce their business?
Right now, he's, so, like I said, it's been, he's had it for a little less than a year. So, it's taken some time to kind of push it along. But we met with the new business about a month ago. So, as soon as he finalizes, you know, whether he's going to be able to get this or not, because it's going to determine, you know, how fast he's going to be able to accomplish it. But the business should be announced relatively soon, I would hope.
Very good. Are there any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Hearing no further discussion, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item three, a resolution endorsing participation in the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Act. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Counsel, legislative study on the lack of alternatives to detention and substantial revisions to the juvenile code led the 1995 Virginia General Assembly to pass the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act to establish a community-based system of progressive intensive sanctions and services that correspond to the severity of the offense and treatment needs. The purpose of the VJCCCA is to deter crime by providing immediate effective punishment that emphasizes accountability of the juvenile offender for his actions as well as reduce the pattern of repeat offending. A resolution from the governing body of each participating locality endorsing participation in the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act is required. This resolution allows the Appalachian Juvenile Commission to adjust the local plan throughout the life of the VJCCCA without having to bring the revised plan before each local board. I can tell you that our budget a year, we usually, I think in each year's budget, we're right roughly at $125,000 goes to the Appalachian Juvenile Commission.
Thank you. Now, the next item I've got is reading of the resolution.
Resolution endorsing participation in the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act, whereas in the 1995, the Virginia General Assembly passed the Virginia Juvenile Community Control Act to establish a community-based system of progressive intensive sanctions and services that correspond to the severity of an offense and treatment needs. And whereas the purpose of VJCCCA is to deter crime by providing immediate effective punishment that emphasizes accountability of the juvenile offender for his or her actions as well as to reduce the pattern of repeat offending. And whereas VJCCCA funding is allocated to each local governing body through a formula-based system, whereas Bristol, Virginia participates in a combined program jointly administered by the Appalachian Juvenile Commission, which includes the counties of Smith, Lee, Scott, Wise, Buchanan, Dickinson, Taswell, and Russell, as well as the city of Norton. And whereas Washington County, Virginia acts as the fiscal agent for the combined program, now for there be it resolved that the city of Bristol, Virginia will participate in the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act and accept funds appropriate for the purpose set forth in this act until written notice to the contrary is provided to the Department of Juvenile Justice, and the county administrator of Washington County, Virginia is hereby authorized to execute a local combined plan on behalf of said localities adopted. This is the 14th day of February 2023.
Thank you. Looking for a motion and a second to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Farnham, second from the Vice Mayor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Item four, tri-annual approval of the City Emergency Operations Plan. We do have a couple of people sign up for public comment. We'll go with city Bristol, Virginia residents first than anyone else. First person is Mr. Nupp.
Good evening, everybody. We're kind of teaming up here. I'm for the Bristol, Virginia side. Joe here for the Bristol, Tennessee side. This won't take long. I'll let Joe go over everything, and then I'll have something to say to it.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel. Joel Kellogg, 1204 Maryland Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. Here tonight representing Hope for Bristol. I, a Bristol, Tennessee resident, am here tonight with Kristen Up, a Bristol, Virginia resident, to show both cities united in our formal request for a community safety plan for the health and safety of all area residents impacted by the Bristol, Virginia landfill. So, tonight, we have several other residents and attendants to show their support. Would those residents please stand during their comment period? Thank you. So, a community safety plan is developed to protect residents around a facility when significant site work or cleanup is required. Such a plan would be in addition to the emergency operations plan that you are considering tonight. The emergency operations plan as is fails to consider the health and safety of the public during the work ahead at the landfill. We at Hope for Bristol, with over 600 residents who signed this petition, believe that a community safety plan is essential to protect all residents from risks and releases associated with the landfill. We believe the city has a duty under the Emergency Planning and Community Rate to Know Act to develop this plan. The current condition of both city-owned landfills, and especially the remedial work ahead, make a safety plan an urgent need. As outlined in our letter, which we'll present to you here soon, a safety plan should include the following steps. The first is to inform. Inform residents of day-to-day risks from the landfill and establish an alert system. Communication of daily activities and explanation of the alert system are key. Second, install long-term air monitoring and provide free indoor monitors to homes at risk from underground landfill gas migration. Third, we request relief options for residents suffering from the landfill's ongoing emissions. It could be fall or later before the landfill's emissions are reduced. Some residents cannot endure another round of drilling while in their homes. Based on feedback from our recent community survey, we are suggesting hotel vouchers for heavily impacted residents who need to escape. We are also requesting an air purifier and filter replacement program. Finally, I want to emphasize that of the 600-plus signatures collected during the past two weeks, over 200 of those signatures were from Bristol, Virginia residents. Those 200 residents primarily reside in the Shakesville area. So, I don't see a state line here. But you need to know that those closest to the landfill are extremely concerned for their health and safety. We urge you to develop a safety plan immediately and share it with the public. We at Hope for Bristol stand ready for further discussion with any members of council. It is time to do the right thing for all residents affected by the Bristol, Virginia landfill. Thank you.
Can I approach?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, here's the signature.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
And here's the safety plan that we have put together.
I'll make sure that we get copies all five of us. Okay. Yeah, I'll get these. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Guys, I'll just make this real short here, okay? The other Saturday and Sunday, I got out in the neighborhood, just walking around, and I knocked on everybody's door on Shakesville, Jane Lane, Cherry Lane, Silver Drop, just to check on people. Some of the testimonies I got from people, this is scary, man. We had more sick people around there than we do good people. But I had a couple of people break down on me. I had a lady, has been there since 1962. My wife's family's been there since the 50s, I think, or maybe before. But it's sad to see what's going on. And I told them the things that I know of, what's going on over the landfill. You guys are trying to fix it, really are. But what, and we all know this, it's been said, this is not a guarantee. What if it don't? These people ask me, what if it don't fix it? That's why we put this, trying to put this in place. Guys, please, please, go over this, make it happen. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff report.
Counsel, tonight is the, well, it's a time of year, or time every three years that we have to approve the City Emergency Operations Plan. That emergency operations plan has been attached, and there is a resolution for that plan as well. I have Chief Armstrong here that can go into more detail if there are any questions.
All right, thank you. So, reading the two resolutions, do you want to do both of them?
Two resolutions?
That's what it says?
I've only got one resolution.
Which one do you have, and I'll do the other one?
I've got a resolution, emergency operations plan.
Okay. You go ahead and do that, and I'll do the National Incident Management System.
Okay. Whereas the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia recognizes the need to prepare for, respond to, and recover from natural and man-made disasters. And whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia has a responsibility to provide for the safety and well-being of its citizens and visitors. And whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia has established and appointed the director and coordinator of emergency management, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia, this emergency operations plan as revised is officially adopted, and is further resolved in order that the director of emergency management and/or his designee or task and authorized to maintain and revise as necessary this document over the next four-year period or until such time ordered to come before this council approved the regular meeting of the city council for the city of Bristol, Virginia on February 14th, 2023.
All right, I'll read the next one. So, this is Resolution Declaration of Adoption National Incident Management System. Whereas at the request of the president, the Department of Homeland Security has developed the National Incident Management System, NIMS, for the purpose of unifying and coordinating all emergency responders' efforts during disasters. And whereas the Department of Homeland Security has directed all federal, state, territorial, tribal, and local entities involved in emergency response to adopt NIMS. And whereas the governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia has similarly endorsed NIMS by proclaiming it the official basis for management of incident response in Virginia. And whereas the NIMS will enable responders at all levels to work together more efficiently and effectively to manage domestic incidents, no matter what the cause, size, or complexity, including catastrophic acts of terrorism and natural disaster. And whereas the city of Bristol currently uses the Incident Command System, ICS, as referred to in NIMS. And whereas the city of Bristol recognizes the need for a single incident management system to be used by all local agencies and disciplines, be it therefore resolved that the city of Bristol, Virginia adopts the National Incident Management System, that this system will be used at all incidents and drills, taught in all emergency management training courses, and reflected in all emergency mitigation preparedness, response, and recovery plans and programs. Approved at the regular meeting of the city council for the city of Bristol, Virginia on February 14th, 2023. So, looking for a motion and a second. Can we approve these in mass, or do we need to do one at a time?
I think you can approve them in mass. Just reference both resolutions in the motion.
Okay, so looking for a motion and a second to approve both resolutions.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve both resolutions, the emergency operations plan and the declaration of adoption National Incident Management System.
Second.
So, that was a motion by Mr. Farnham and a second by Mr. Holmes. Is there any counsel discussion or questions for the chief?
The resolution for the, for adoption of NIMS says that we currently use Incident Command System as referred to in NIMS. Does that mean that we're changing from one format to the other? Or is one a component of the other?
Incident Command System is more of a smaller-scale incident. For example, when we have a house fire, we have a shift supervisor who organizes the fire scene and delegates tasks to be done. NIMS is more on a national scale where we're working with one locality with another, like Bristol, working with Washington County, Smith County, like that. So, one is not replacing the other. One is really encompassed by the other, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Chief, I just want to say thank you for the work you put in. I know you're our emergency preparedness guru in the city, and I appreciate the work you do on this and everything you do to keep our citizens safe. And, you know, no pun intended, put out fires all across town. So, thank you very much. Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Thank you very much.
All right. Item five is discussion of a rental inspection ordinance. Staff report by Mr. Dietrich.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm just going to say a couple of real quick things, and then I'm going to turn it over to our property maintenance inspector, Josh Slagle, who's going to do a quick presentation for you. So, what you have in front of you is a draft for discussion only of a, create an ordinance, potential ordinance, that would create a rental certificate of compliance, which we have been referring to as a rental inspection ordinance. What this would do would be to designate specific areas of the city in accordance with state code, and it would allow our inspectors to inspect rental units in these designated areas for code compliance. And since Mr. Slagle has done the bulk of the work putting together the ordinance and is one of the primary ones who would be inspecting these, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to him for the presentation. And then afterwards, if there's any discussion or if you have any questions, either one of us might be able to answer for you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I've got a fairly short presentation here. So, the purpose of the ordinance would be to create certain districts inside the city, which I've outlined, we'll see later, where dwelling units exist that, I guess, we would deem need to undergo periodic inspection to ensure that the rental dwelling units are, I guess, up to the current code that they were built and that no life safety issues exist in those houses, things like that. I did put underneath there government housing projects by BRHA would be excluded from this as they go through their own maintenance inspections. The districts on the left there in purple would be the central inspection district. Its northernmost point there would be at Lee Highway and Valley Drive. It would come up Long Crescent on your left and extend all the way. It would come up Long Crescent on your left and extend all the way west to the railroad tracks at Commonwealth Avenue, going down to State Street, east upstate, and follow the railroad tracks back up to, run about Electrolux and Eastern Little League Field, that area right there. The Southeast Inspection District, if you follow its northernmost point there, would follow Valley Drive down to Kingsmill Pike, and would follow Kingsmill Pike to the city limits on the east, as far south as the Tennessee state line. And again, its western boundary would be the Norfolk and Southern Main Line. The districts, your central district would be the Census Track 202, it's blocks two, three, and four of Census Track 202. Guess that's a slide of what I just explained to you, its boundaries. Inside the central district, there's a total of 1,736 housing units. Approximately 1,044 of those are rental dwelling units. That number is an approximate number. It's actually likely to be maybe a little higher than that than it is lower. Some of these, when they're, they're purchased for, for the purpose of an investment, the owners of these properties might list their, their address as, as the address of the property there. So, I anticipate this might be a little bit higher, but not, not a ton. So, about 60.2% of dwelling units inside of the central district would be rentals. Your southeast district, the one in blue there on the right, that's boundary, again, Census Track 203, blocks one and two. Total housing units inside that district, 1,470 of those, about 51.9%, call it 52%, are rental units. For a combination there, inside those two districts combined, you've got about 3,206 housing units in total, 1,806 are rental for about 56.3%. As far as how the ordinance would work out, there would be a registration process, there would be registered no longer than 90 days after the adoption of an ordinance if one was to be adopted. The registration, there's no fee to register, however, failing to register would incur a fine of $50 or a amount to be set by you gentlemen and ladies. Rental units that would be inspected after the adoption of an ordinance, an initial fee for this could be determined by you. They would go on a basis of four years, so once it's had its initial inspection, it's exempt from an inspection for four years after that. If something arises within that four years, that would cause another inspection to take place, of course, that would be a follow-up inspection, which would also incorporate an additional fee to that. If there are violations found in those inspections, you'd be given a temporary certificate of occupancy with those and a set period of time to correct those violations. If the violations were not corrected, you, you could face a civil penalty up to $2,500. I have a few examples, they're not the greatest in the world, just a few that I was able to ground you up. Beside the examples I've described, what they are and below it is the, the violation as it is in the Virginia Maintenance Code, which you can read all of those, or we can, we can skip them to this place. You've got a, an open receptacle in this case, the, the faceplate was off, the receptacle was off, you had bare wires just hanging out inside the wall there. There's another example of the same thing, this actually came from the same residence, where you had, it looks like a sock, or I believe it was a sock stuffed in with some bare wires. Most of these are fairly minor, some of them are more serious than others. In this case, you've got an electric box sitting on top of a floor, it's not recessed into a wall or the floor for that matter, it's missing a faceplate. This example, we've got missing fixtures around the bathtub inside of that, of course you've got rotting wood behind it. Cracked and abraded surfaces, this case, it looks like occurred from a leaking sink. Broken windows that are, for all intents and purposes, inoperable and unable to be Open splices, not secured inside of a junction box or, or otherwise concealed. And just a few examples, they're not entirely serious, some of them are more serious than others, some of them go, I guess, uncorrected for a long time, and some of them wind up due causes and hazards that ultimately result in the house being declared either unfit for occupancy or in extreme cases, perhaps condemned.
Thank you very much. Do we have any, any questions for Mr. Slagel?
Well, so I, I don't really have many questions. I do have a few thoughts and comments. And full disclosure, I, I own rental units both inside those districts and outside of those districts, so, for what it's worth, you know, in, in my world, when, when someone's buying a property, getting an FHA loan, a VA loan, there's an appraiser that goes, and they're checking, they check for the value of the property, but they're also checking for safety things, and they look at things like broken windows, peeling paint, missing hand railings at staircases, those are really the big ones. And, and you know, when I, you know, get a call and someone says, hey, will you come and tell me how much this property is worth, I've got a tenant inside the property, and I go in and there's no smoke detectors, and the tenant says, I thought the landlord was supposed to do it, the landlord says, no, the tenant's supposed to do it, and either way, there's none in the property, no smoke detectors, no fire extinguishers, and, you know, I, my first thought was, well, you know, people own their property, this is, you know, a free country, they need to do what they want with their property, but when it comes to safety issues, like some of those things we mentioned, I, I think this, this can be a good thing to try to help with safety in our city, and ultimately hopefully keep our neighborhoods nice.
Well, sometimes, especially with something like that, you've got instances where, where owners or tenants don't realize that certain things like that could be a violation or the seriousness that, that could result in not having something as simple as a smoke detector.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'll just say, I do love the idea. One, when I was looking over this earlier, thinking about the safety issues and just thinking if children lived in these houses, or, you know, even, even adults, it wouldn't be safe. And so, I like the idea of having these inspections done. My question would be, I know that, that's quite a few units. If I calculated it right, did you say there's like, a thou, over a thousand?
In total, there's 1,806.
Oh, in total, it's, okay. My question would be, I know it would probably put a lot more on you and thinking about the capacity for our staff to be able to do these inspections. Would that be something that you all could do and handle with your current workload?
I think we've done the math on one district, which was the Central Inspection District, which had a total of 1,044 units. Estimated to have to do about 26 of them a month to keep on a four-year rotation. So, at 26 a month, it might be, you know, if, if Mr. Farnham owns a house and, and let's say the Central District, it might be four years before you get your first inspection for that. So, about four years doing 26 a month, that would be about it, so I think it would calculate up to about six a week, which I, I think, pushing, maybe not even trying too hard, I could probably cut in more than six a week.
And one of the things we were discussing was setting up specific times, this day and this day, from this time to this time, will be only these types of inspections. So, when people sign up for the rental inspection, you know, they'll have certain time slots that they'll have to sign up for, and some of them might actually have to be after normal, you know, 5 o'clock, 8 to 5 hours, and, and we're prepared to, to make sure that, you know, we can make that work.
Okay. Well, like I said, I like the idea, and I think if the fire chief was still here, he would probably agree. I mean, I'm just thinking some of this is a huge fire hazard, too, that could, could possibly prevent some fires.
Right.
Yep. That's all I have.
I've got three questions. One, and I asked Mr. Slagel earlier, and he didn't know, I would like to know if the, the state enabling code would allow this to apply to business, to commercial properties as well as residential.
I don't think so. I think it's residential.
Yeah, I think this, this particular code is just residential, but we can look into that, definitely.
I know of some commercial properties where the tenants are having to endure some rather significant difficulties because the landowners aren't keeping up with the property, and it's actually a, a safety issue there. But basically, I'm just thinking, does this go far enough? And if we can improve the living environment for some of our businesses as well, that would be, that would be beneficial.
I believe that, at this point, we would want to start with something that we think we, you know, we can get a handle on, just the residential properties. If we go, try to go too wide, then we might have things just falling through the cracks with the current staff levels. However, we will take a look at that and see if, if that's something that is in the code or could be possibly done.
Counsel, just looking at the quote, code under the 36 hyphen 105.1 colon 1, the dwelling unit means a building or structure or part thereof that is used for a home or residence by one or more persons who maintain a household, and a residential rental dwelling unit means a dwelling unit that is leased or rented to one or more tenants. Then it goes on, so it doesn't talk about anything in regards to commercial buildings. It appears it's just solely, and it's under Title 36, which is housing of the Virginia Code, so I don't think it's talking about commercial buildings.
Would you be able to find if there is parallel code for commercial properties?
We can look and see, but I think all of that would fall under the Uniform Statewide Building Code, and if there are people that have issues with their current place that they're renting, they need to let us know so we can get a building inspector out there to take a look at it.
Thank you. Second question was, do any other localities in our area currently do this? Have they run into complications, benefits?
As far as in our area goes, I'm not familiar with any, doesn't mean that none exists, just none that I'm familiar with. I know Northern Virginia, they're a little more prominent, Virginia Beach, and, and RICO, I think, have one, but I'm not, not certain how, how local they are.
Might also check on the Tennessee side, it would be under Virginia Code, so their stuff could be worded significantly differently, but it might be informative to know what complications they may have run into, what benefits they've run into, what unexpected costs they may have run into, things like that.
Right.
Third question, how'd you determine these districts? I noticed that it doesn't include any of the rental properties on, say, the, the Randall area.
So, most of these, in the areas where these exist anyways, the central and the southeast district had a, I guess, a concentration of higher than 50% of rental dwelling units. Some of this was actually discussed and talked about before my time in this position. Now, to my understanding, that's, that's why those were outlined initially as, as a starting point for it.
And, and as Mr. Slagel did point out, we did follow census tracts and census block tracks, so we didn't, you know, it, we did kind of use an established, you know, numeration system there, we didn't just pick a street, you know, where to start and where to stop, we did kind of follow those census blocks.
I do know as of, from January the 1st of last year to December 31st of last year, this doesn't reflect the total number that I did, but the actual, I guess, reports, if that's what you want to call it, that I made, there were 126 of them, but about 45% of reports I'd done just for code violations were inside of the central and the southeast inspection district on this map.
Would it be conceivable that if you do this, and it, it seems beneficial, that you might come back later and ask to create a third district?
To my knowledge, I don't think there's anything that prohibits that from happening, and I would imagine that if, you know, if the need arises, that, that would be a, a way we could bring that up.
Okay. But for now, you think that these two areas are, are worst offenders, as it were?
That's correct. That's where I have the highest concentration, at least, of, of violations.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I'll say, you know, first, thank you for the work you, the work you do every day doing this and, and putting this together. So, are, correct, correct me if I, if I, if I heard wrong, so these are the districts where, you know, the areas where we're over 50% in rentals?
That's correct. The southeast district was at 51, right at 52, the central was at 60.2.
Okay. And, you know, the, the one thing I'll say, a lot of the, I'm not going to say a lot, but I'm sure that a, a big portion of the violations that you see are not just those relatively minor things, like, you know?
Correct.
An exposed fuse box or something, you know, it's, it can be a lot of bigger things.
Something that could be fixed with a screwdriver, basically.
Yeah, yeah, five minutes and, and you can fix it, but, you know, some of the things, I'm sure, are significant.
Right.
You know, and, and do present a, an immediate health hazard to the people who are living there who have, you know, no control really over the property you're living in, so, you know, I think this is, I think this is a good first step, I think it will, will, you might have some landlords mad at you, but, you know, it'll, it'll present a better quality of life for the people who are renting and, you know, usually are in, maybe in dire circumstances anyway, so I think this is, I think this is a very good proposal.
Thank you. And counsel, I'd also add that when you enact these, this ordinance, the local governing body has to determine that, one, there is a need to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the occupants of the dwelling units inside the designated rental inspection district, two, the residential rental dwelling units within the designated rental inspection district are either A, blighted or in the process of deteriorating, or B, the residential rental dwelling units are in need of inspection by the building department to prevent deterioration, taking into the account the number, age, and condition of residential dwelling rental units inside the proposed rental district, and three, the inspection of the residential dwelling units inside the proposed rental inspection district is necessary to maintain safe, decent, sanitary living conditions for tenants and other residents living in the proposed rental inspection district. So, what you're doing, you're making a determination that there are areas of the city that need some attention, and we have to make that determination based on what we know. I think as we all know, when you look at the central district and the southeast district, those are the older parts of the city where there are quite a few rental units, and that number, when Josh told me that last week, that we had that many rental units in those areas, really surprised me. I didn't anticipate to have that many rental units, and, you know, just, go drive through the neighborhoods, and I think you could tell by looking at some of these places that, you know, there is a need for an inspection.
It also means that contrary to some of my questions, there is a higher standard to meet here. We can't just decide that area looks blighted, we want to have that area inspected, there's a lot more to, to go into consideration.
Right.
You know, I was, you know, I live in Kingtown, so I, I drive through these neighborhoods every day, so, you know, I, that is surprising that, that the proportion is that high that, that those are rental units, but, you know, if this, if this goes away to, you know, unblight, oblided property, or make things more safe for people, that's, you know, at the end of the day, that's what we should be going for, so. I know, I know that we don't have an action item on this to vote on, so I, I do look forward soon to being able to.
And I will just note, too, that I think as goes to Mr. Pollard's question, I can't remember who asked if he could do different districts, but at this point, we would just focus on two districts. However, if we do notice that there is a rental area or an area that has even just one rental property, counsel can make the determination that it needs to be inspected, and then we can go inspect that property as well.
And that is in the ordinance that we did give, so.
Because theoretically, you know, five years down the road, we might have a very high proportion of rental properties, say, on the west side of town, you know, you know, with the casino growth and stuff, so, so, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is item six, Presentation of Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget Calendar, and I believe Ms. Jennings is doing the staff report.
I think we've switched off, so.
Okay.
Counsel, I'm about, do you have that, Gene? Normally, I present the budget calendar there at the, in the January, and we just did not get an opportunity to get it on the agenda, but we have had this budget calendar working since probably November. Once Gene gets that pulled up here. Oh, you don't have it? Can you pull up the agenda packet and click on it?
While we're waiting, should I tell some jokes or something?
Page 70.
I don't think that's the right one, Gene. Here, I'll send you a mic. Maybe.
I can just break out a song, that's fine.
All right. And counsel, I'll tell you, this, this budget calendar is probably one of the most important budget calendars we're going to have to follow. Send in my six budget seasons. So, Gene, you should have that. So, budget work papers went out to departments in November of this past year. The work papers were due back to finance on January the thirteenth of this past January. Outside applications were due, outside agency applications were due January thirteenth. Internal department budget reviews are going on this month. We've already been, we're about halfway through, I think, through our budget review with most departments. I can tell you, most departments recognize where the city is and have not really requested anything outrageous at this point. They recognize the needs that we have as it relates to the landfill, and they've been very cognizant of that fact, and I'm pleased with that. I would also say that they also have needs that need to be addressed at some point, either now or in the future, and, you know, these are needs that we've, a lot of these needs we've actually put off for six years, for one reason or another. And there comes a point in time when, at some point, we have to just make the decision to go forward with some of these needs, and we'll address those as we go through budget workshops. The budget development will continue to occur February and March of 2023. I will have a budget workshop on March fourteenth at five P.M., so I'd note that that's at a five P.M., we'll start that budget workshop, and then we'll have school and outside agency presentations beginning at six P.M. on March the fourteenth, which is a regular meeting. On Thursday, March sixteenth, we'll have another budget workshop at six P.M. to discuss the budget more in depth. And throughout that time, I will be meeting with each and every one of you all, because we have some very difficult decisions to make this budget cycle, and I will be presenting my budget March twenty-eighth at six P.M. And normally, I don't present my budget until the first or second week in April. However, I'll just rip the Band-Aid off. I do believe there's gonna have to be tax increases this upcoming year to cover expenses associated with the landfill. And in order to have the tax rate resolution passed on April the eleventh, we had to advertise that in an appropriate amount of time, so my budget needs to be balanced by March the twenty-eighth, and I'm gonna have to have some idea of the tax rate increase that we will have in order to have that budget balanced by March the twenty-eighth. So, we'll have the tax rate resolution April the eleventh, that way the tax bills can go out in time for the June fifth payment date. We will advertise the fiscal year twenty-three budget on April the sixteenth. The public hearing for the budget ordinance will be April twenty-fifth. The first reading of the budget would be May the ninth, and the second reading of the budget would be May twenty-third. So, that's, that's how the calendar plays out right now. We may have to have another budget workshop or two in the month of March, in the month of March, but we'll determine that as we continue to move through the budget.
So, at least this calendar only has one workshop that's not associated with a regularly scheduled meeting, and that would be on March sixteenth.
That's right. And I think, normally, we have several budget workshops, but I think based on the budget works, worksheets that I've seen from departments right now, I don't think that we're gonna have to have that third budget workshop like we normally do, based on what I'm seeing. However, I do think we're probably gonna have to have a lengthy conversation as it relates to tax rates, not only real estate taxes, but lodging taxes, mills taxes, emissions taxes, and fees for the collection rate as well.
I'll just say, very briefly, before we move on, you know, this is, as you noted, a very, very aggressive calendar, you know, for us to get this done earlier than normal. I mean, you know, there have been times in my time on Counsel, I think this is, what is this, my fifth budget season, I guess, that, you know, we were, we were passing stuff in the middle of June, you know, and in this case, we'll be done in, in May.
I think in the previous years, except COVID, I think in spring of eighteen, we were in June. Nineteen, I think we finished in May. Twenty, we had to push it into June simply because, as we were going into the budget, COVID happened, and we had to redo the budget after we had it completed. That was pushed into June, and I think last year, we finished in May, if I'm not mistaken, as well. So, while it looks aggressive, it's, you know, I think it's reasonable, and I'd also note that our budget ordinance has to be in effect thirty days prior before it takes effect. So, you know, you need to have it passed no later, really, than May thirty, May thirtieth, so that it can be in effect on July one.
Well, I, I say aggressive, not in a negative sense. I say it's, I, you know, I think it's good that we're getting going like we are, because there will be some very difficult conversations we have to have on how we fund everything that we need to fund, so we'll get into it and we'll see what we can figure out, but, but thank you for presenting this to us. Next item is item seven, Approval of Release and Settlement Agreement relating to Bristol, Virginia versus the BVU. Staff report.
Counsel, as you all know, we've been in litigation with Bristol, Virginia Utilities Authority since July of 2020, and we've gone through several mediations during this time period, and we have worked with BVU to come to a resolution on the litigation that we filed back in July of 2020. So, as you all know, this is in regards to net proceeds that were due to the City of Bristol via a transition agreement that was signed between Bristol, Virginia Utilities and Bristol, the City of Bristol, Virginia back in 2013, I believe. We alleged breach of contract, unjust enrichment, and reformation of a contract. This release and settlement agreement resolves the matters alleged in the legal action and dismisses the case based upon the terms of the agreement. What I would note, most important and the most material facts in regards to this litigation are the city would receive a payment of two-point-one million dollars from BVU, and then BVU would also, we would retitle some property, specifically City Hall. There was a question of whether or not BVU owned, BVU owned the property, or whether the city owned the property. This would forever settle that dispute, and the deeds would be titled in the name of the City of Bristol, Virginia, and there's some other properties that the City of Bristol, Virginia would transfer to BVU that are really just currently BVU properties. And also, BVU would continue to bill for our trash collection fee for at least, for a period of at least ten years.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a motion and a second to take action on this.
And I would ask that the motion be made based on the staff recommendation wording.
And can I just throw out that I'm gonna be abstaining from voting, and the reason that I'm abstaining from voting is because throughout this process, I also became the council member that sits on the BVU board, so sort of being involved with both council and board, and we've had discussions about, well, is it, what's best, vote for both, vote for one, not the other, or abstain from both, and felt like it's best just to abstain on both sides.
Thank you. So, we're looking for the motion in a second.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the release and settlement agreement and, as presented, and give the city manager authority to endorse the agreement.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by the Vice Mayor and second by Mr. Pollard. Is there any discussion?
This has taken, been a long time coming. I know that neither side was really happy with the results, but that, that is often the sign of a balanced agreement, where neither side is really happy, and I am glad to see this to finally get behind us. We've got business we need to do, both in the city and with BVU. We need to be able to move forward.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Abstain.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. Into our ordinance section, D one, An Ordinance to Approve the Sale of Two Parcels of City-owned Land Located on Spyglass Court, Ordinance twenty-three oh one. This will be a second reading. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Counsel, this is for two lots located on, located on Spyglass Court. The city received one offer. We advertised it. We did not receive any other offers, and the potential buyer will build two homes on each, or one home on each lot for a total of two homes, and we're asking for approval so that we can move forward and negotiate and consummate the sale of those properties.
Thank you. All right. So, we're gonna be looking for a motion in a second for second reading, and it can be by full ordinance or by caption only.
I'll move for a second reading by caption only.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Pollard, second by Mr. Farnham. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the City of Bristol, Virginia, located on Spyglass Court, map parcels numbers one-two-one hyphen C hyphen one hyphen E one, and number one-two-one hyphen C hyphen one hyphen E two.
All righty. Thank you. Looking for a motion and a second for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. We got a motion by Mr. Pollard, a second by the Vice Mayor, a third by Mr. Holmes. And please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. D two, An Ordinance Pertaining to Camera Speed Monitoring and Enforcement in Highway Work Zones and School Crossing Zones. This is for a second reading also. This is ordinance twenty-three dash four. No one has signed up for public comment. Staff report.
Counsel, this is a second reading of the ordinance that would add, add Section eighty-six hyphen two oh seven to Chapter eighty-six, Article five, Division three of the city code. This ordinance would allow photo speed monitoring devices to be installed in highway work zones and school crossing zones. The first reading of this ordinance occurred at the regularly scheduled city council meeting on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a motion and a second for a second reading, which can be either full text or by caption only.
I move that we approve the second reading, have the second reading by caption only.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Farnham, second for Mr. Holmes. Is there any discussion?
Just to, just to say, I know we've talked about this the last few times. It came up on the agenda, and, you know, lots of, of topics about this, some for, some against. I think we know, the studies show there were several thousand people speeding through speed zone, school zones during the school day, over ten miles an hour above the posted speed limit, so we, we gotta do something to slow people down in the city, especially in our school zones. It's a, it's a safety issue.
I've had a number of people contact me with questions concerning this. Some had reasons why they didn't like it. I think that, at least the proposal that we received, which is, is not necessarily anything we're taking action on, but the proposal as we received had addressed a lot of those issues, because they put a lot of thought and a lot of work into it, so that a lot of the questions and concerns had been addressed. It is, the citations will be issued by City of Bristol, Virginia police officers. The citations will have a full right of appeal, and it, it basically is a force multiplier for our police department. It lets them greatly improve safety in our school zones while reducing the physical manpower required to do a lot of that enforcement. Yes, some people may not like it, but ultimately, somebody who would have reason to not like this is a danger to our community, and they need to watch their speed in the school zone.
So, yeah, someone also told me it's gonna make a lot of people mad, and I said, the only people that are gonna be mad are the ones that are breaking the law.
Yeah, I'll just say briefly, it's, you know, it's not often that, you know, we have an easy call for anything, but don't speed in school zones. I mean, that's probably the least controversial thing I'll ever say, is just don't speed in school zones, and if, if you're upset about getting a ticket in a school zone, don't speed in it.
I might also mention that this is only adding enabling code in the city code. We're not actually putting any speed cameras in place. There, there will be additional processes to determine what vendor we go with and so on and so forth. And ultimately, as, as I alluded to, it will be implemented by the Bristol, Virginia Police Department, so we can make sure that it's done right.
Hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance to add Section eighty-six hyphen two oh seven to Chapter eighty-six, Article five, Division three of the city code pertaining to camera speed monitoring and enforcement in highway work zones and school crossing zones?
Thank you. Looking for a motion and a second for adoption.
I move for the adoption of the ordinance now.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Farnham, second by Mr. Pollard. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, and I believe we might need to separate these out, so what's the, what's the pleasure, Counsel?
Would it be best to separate out and vote individually on the items, or?
I think you can separate items one through six as one item, and then seven, eight, and nine as a separate item.
Okay. All right. Well, I move that we approve the consent agenda items one through six.
Second.
All right. So, motion to approve the consent agenda items one through six by Mr. Farnham, second by the Vice Mayor. And I'll just note, before we vote, that the reason that we're doing this is, these are all approval of minutes for meetings that occurred before Mr. Pollard and Mr. Holmes were members of the city council. So, clerk, call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Abstain.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard? Abstain. Osborne?
Yes. All right. Now, on to consent agenda items seven, eight, and nine.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items seven, eight, and nine.
Second.
All right. Motion for Mr. Farnham, second from the Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right. Item E, Matters to Be Presented by Members of the Public for Non-Agenda Items. We have one person, Ms. Evenden.
Becky Evenden, two-ten Race Day Center Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. Almost said Virginia. Over two years ago, when, as a Bristol, Virginia resident, I reached out with questions about the landfill's problems, I never imagined we'd end up where we are today. A landfill hot enough to be described by some engineers as smoldering, countless residents who have temporarily relocated or sold their homes and left entirely due to how badly they were suffering from the landfill, and a price tag for the work that looks like a federal-level project, which I know I've said here before. I was looking back at the letter that Bristol, Virginia sent to the EPA and DEQ in January twenty-twenty-two, asking for help with the landfill in addition to more recent public relations statements about the landfill. Over and over, the city's rhetoric in describing the landfill problem focuses on malodor, odor. Have you all considered that the understated language you are using to describe an environmental and public health disaster is working against you? I personally am waiting to see how high the temperatures in the quarry landfill truly are, and I'll just go off state for, off statement for a minute and just say that we know from records that they've gotta be hot. The city is getting ready to put in, or they are right now, putting in cables that reach temperatures even higher than two-hundred-and-fifty-seven degrees Fahrenheit, so we're wondering how high these are going to be, and that is a big deal. We learned with the thermocouple drilling in November and December that these remedial steps are brutal for residents. Landfill emissions increase day and night. The real risk of fire and sudden plumes of landfill gases is high with the work ahead. You all have days when workers can't even do basic temperature monitoring because their badges are alarming for health-threatening levels of chemicals, if I understand correctly. So, your engineers are never gonna call this an emergency. They would lose other clients if they used plain language to describe the temperatures and the extreme hazards occurring in the Bristol Quarry. It's going to be up to you all to recognize the environmental disaster in your midst. If you want federal and state assistance, real assistance, you are gonna have to bring the rhetoric about the landfill up to the level of what your residents and Bristol, Tennessee residents are experiencing. Absolutely, please, keep working to get the geomembrane on top of this landfill, because that is our best hope of substantial relief from the landfill emissions in the community. because that is our best hope of substantial relief from the landfill emissions in the community. However, please understand that even when you finish that work outlined in the DEQ consent order, you still won't be done. This will be an incredibly unstable situation with a lid on top that you'll be continually lifting to do more work for decades. The health implications will continue as well. I urge you all to talk, begin talking about this as a true crisis. I urge you to recognize the ongoing risks and to make a safety plan happen, similar to what Joel and Chris presented to you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, there being no further business, we stand adjourned.